Good evening and welcome to the June 5, 2024 City Council Meeting. Before we begin, I want to ask the City Attorney to provide the outcome of the May 29 closed session.
Good evening. On May 29, the City Council met in closed session with a third-party consultant, Mary Egan, with the Municipal Resource Group to facilitate the evaluation of the city manager and the city attorney. The evaluation was conducted and guidance was provided. Contract and salary changes for these positions will be agendized for the June 19 City Council meeting in open session. There is no other reportable action from the closed session. For the record, the closed session concluded at 5:25 PM.
Very much, Michelle. And I'll call the meeting to order now and I'll request the City Clerk call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernice Coney.
Here.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Here.
Councilmember Rakuci.
Here.
And Mayor Haldashelt.
Here. To lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight is Andrew from Roseville Leadership Class. Andrew, you want to come a little forward there?
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in reciting the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Andrew. I'll ask the City Clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city of Roseville. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or online on our city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the City Council and not to any staff member or the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded tonight. For comments that are not listed on the agenda, members of the public may address the City Council regarding any item not listed and within the subject matter jurisdiction of our City Council. Public comments on non-agendized items are limited to three minutes per speaker. The collective initial period for the first segment is 25 minutes. Any speaker that did not have the opportunity to speak during this first segment will have an opportunity at the very end, just prior to council comments, to express themselves. The Brown Act does prohibit our City Council from taking action, debating, or discussing items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. For comments on agendized items, those appearing on the agenda tonight, speakers will have five minutes to provide input and the comments should be relevant to the item that is being listed. Time will be monitored and once the red light begins to flash at the podium, we request that speakers please conclude their comments. Lastly, if addressing our City Council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. And with that, we welcome you to the city of Roseville and thank you for your civic participation tonight.
Thank you very much, Carmen. Well, as our City Clerk mentioned, we'll start with public comments on non-agenda items. Nick, would you like to come forward and provide your comments?
Hello. My name is Nick Bryant. I am looking, I am looking for more police patrols on Country Club Injunction and people are going over the speed limit. I am sick and tired of it. This is ridiculous and I am requesting more police patrols. Increasing police patrols is better for this community because I do not want to get hit by a car. I, I don't, I don't want to get hit by a car. I've been hit by a car once in a while. I don't want to get hit by a car. It's too dangerous for me and our roads are bad and I feel like that we need to fix the road. It's getting very dangerous to me. I feel safe for riding buses because I feel safer. I don't feel, I don't feel safe walking like crosswalk by myself without getting hit by a car because people are speeding, they're going over the speed limit and there's too many cars on the road and I don't like it. What's happening? I don't like what's happening and I just want more, I want more police patrols on Country Club Injunction and to, to keep people from speeding. They don't, they don't, these people don't care anymore. They speed, they, and sometimes it's a car accident. I don't like what's happening right now. I don't really like what's happening anymore because there's just too many people are speeding and they're going over the speed limit. They don't care anymore. That's why I am looking for, and half of the time I see people speeding in my apartment complex too. Heritage Park Apartments, this has gotten bad and people still don't care anymore. And it's like, there's too many people speeding in my primary complex. They're speeding, they don't care what's going on, they are speed bumps and I don't, I don't like what's happening anymore. I just feel like, I feel like this is becoming too dangerous for me. I don't feel safe walking like crosswalk by myself without getting hit by a car unless every, every officer is there watching these crosswalks because I feel like that it needs to be addressed, especially our kid, especially we have kids that walk the crosswalk. Thank you.
Nick, thanks, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Good evening, Council, can you hear me?
Do you want to bring it down a little bit?
Yeah. Good evening, council members. I'm Muriel Moore and of course our astute city manager. My comment is in regards to, and thank you very much, Nick, because that's exactly what I wanted to go to and address. That's District 5, that would be Country Club Injunction, which is the area in which I not only work but reside, work as a city employee and reside. There have been three times this past, the month of May, that I have contacted, per my parents, okay, being the crossing guard, of, of a tree that overhangs a stoplight. Okay, three times I called Park and Recs for them, taken pictures, and those pictures have been provided to my supervisor so we can get some resolve on it. A city is only as good as the services that it provides to its residents and with District 5 coming up for reelection, we need to put someone in there for all those seats that are vacant, put someone in there that would be responsive to the residents that it serves and not just go for ribbon, ribbon cutting or just a ribbon cutting of a building. Be responsive and know your community, know your residents and know what their needs are and know what we're not provide, what we, the city, is not providing them. That is do them and those are those services. And bushes that overhang the sidewalk with children that are coming to and from on bicycles, they can't, they have to get out in the street to pass, to get to school or come from school because Parks and Recs, Public Works, whomever is not doing their job. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Mike Simpson, 806 Oak Ridge Drive. WT Ike School Coloma at Oak Ridge Drive. It was first an elementary school, kindergarten to sixth grade. At that time, there was an adult crossing guard and a motorcycle officer that parked and let his presence be known on and off. WT Ike then changed to middle school, sixth, seventh, eighth grades. No more crossing guard, no enforcement of road, purchased a megaphone with a siren and used it quite a bit to slow traffic, if possible, with various results. When I requested help, it came in information I could sit on my front lawn with a gentleman who would use a radar gun and then tell me they were speeding. My job was to record their license number and if they would be notified by mail, I believed they were not, abiding to the posted speed limit. I lived on Oak Ridge since 1992, went through the flood in 95. The street was closed off, but then there wasn't much traffic as the town was still small. Roseville is not small anymore. Traffic has increased with the town's growth along with the speeds. People are driving along with not stopping on right turns as well as stop signs and traffic lights. Over the years, I have watched the speeds driven on Oak Ridge. Some research has come back with personal input from police, engineers, et cetera. Traffic police provide response, not enough officers and the pay scale was not also brought up to keep them here. Engineering, flashing 25 miles an hour, black and white sign that lights up when an individual is over the speed limit. It does not, however, record any data, speeds, amount of times, or lights up. The sign is constantly flashing, it does not seem to make any changes into speeding in, in speeding habits. There is also a retirement center on Oak Ridge near Kirby and the Oak Ridge Bridge. The residents there walk and also have scooters. These scooters are driven down Oak Ridge by individuals who are elderly with cars speeding by them. My solution as is speed bumps. I have turned in the information that I have, but the City upon request has given me for this information, quite a, quite a bit out of date, but still useful. I was able to get any information regarding the fire department. Kirby Street's two streets away is from the fire department, so it should not need a, a speed bump by the facility. I believe it's only a matter of time before there's an accident and could be fatal if the speed's driven. Also, I have talked with the local police during this time officially. I don't know what to tell you, but the town's growing. I grew up in Santa Clara. I'm 70 years old. I've seen quite a bit in my time. My brother got hit as a young boy by a Corvair. Lucky he had a full, half a body cast on. There's nothing being done. This town's growing and you're, you're missing the whole problem of speeding the traffic. There's no enforcement. I don't know where you live or where you drive, but I can tell you right here, for living here for 20 years, there's no, there's no enforcement. I haven't seen a police officer on that street in 10 years that has done anything but give anybody a ticket. We have a school, we have old people, it's just a matter of time before somebody gets hit. I usually don't come down here because I feel you guys are doing a great job. Last time I was here was when we flooded. I came down, Rakuci was here and I believe the mayor. I got a pat on the back because I came down and told you how it really was. Well, I'm back here again 20 years later telling you that we need to do something about traffic in this town and the way this town is growing is insane because if you don't get on top of it now, you're never going to get on top of it. Thank you for your time. I hope to hear something from you in the future.
Thank you very much. We have other public comment on non-agenda items. Seeing none, I'll ask the Clerk to announce the procedures for approving the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the City Council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the City Council staff or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such a request. Is there a member of the public that would like to request an item be pulled from consent? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, before you, the City Council will consider approving consent calendar items 6.1 to 6.37. May I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll do our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernice Coney.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashelt.
Yes. Thank you. We'll move on to our first item under ordinance is youth development program funding policy and budget adjustment. We have with us our, our Parks Recreation and Library Director Jill Geller and our Recreation Manager Jeff Nielsen will take your report. Presentation.
Thank you very much and good evening, Mayor Haldashelt and members of the council. I am Jill Geller, Parks Recreation and Libraries Director, and with me is Jeff Nielsen, our PRL Recreation Manager. We're here tonight to talk about our youth development program. The youth development program includes adventure clubs, preschools, and subsidized after-school programs. We've been in this business for several decades, but we don't often get the opportunity to talk to you about it. So tonight, we wanted to share with you our successes and our challenges in this area and Jeff will start us off.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council.
Still morning?
Or good afternoon. It's been a long day. Yeah, I don't, I don't want morning again.
I didn't want to start it over.
I don't want morning again. Is it Thursday, Wednesday?
It was cooler though.
It was cooler in the morning. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah. Adventure Club, established in 1987, is a state-licensed school age program, providing a safe, caring environment for the elementary school aged child before and after school. Age-appropriate activities designed to meet a child's social, physical, and intellectual needs are offered under the guidance of trained and qualified staff. Adventure Club currently operates 21 Adventure Club sites in city-owned buildings located on school campuses within the Roseville City School District, the Dry Creek Joint Elementary School District, and new this current school year, the Center Joint Unified School District. The Adventure Club program currently serves over 1,400 children each day. I would like to provide you with some information regarding the impacts of COVID to Adventure Club and a driving force that brings us here today, asking for your support. Prior to the COVID shutdown, Adventure Club had a daily attendance of 1,625 children each day. Most sites were at capacity, 60 to 90 kids per site, depending on the size of the site and many, and with many more on the waitlist. On March 16, 2020, Adventure Club was ordered to shut down. We were closed for 15 straight weeks. On August 10, 2020, five months after the shutdown, we resumed operations to a distance learning model. In this model, children were on laptops in a virtual classroom setting at Adventure Clubs. During this time, we had 559 participants, 30% of pre-COVID normal, uh, normal numbers. Over the next several months, Adventure Club managed through a hybrid model of before and after-school programming. On August 5, 2021, 17 months from the last time we ran a normal program, Adventure Club opened back up to full operation with a daily participation of approximately 1,145 children or 37% below pre-COVID numbers. Since this time, Adventure Club has not been able to reach those pre-COVID attendance numbers. Today, we are at approximately 85% of those pre-COVID participations. As with any program, it doesn't come without its challenges. In January 2023, we discontinued morning programs at various Roseville City School District sites due to the school district changing their bell schedule to start much earlier. In 2021, California passed a bill allocating additional funds to the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program for school districts. This program provides funding for after-school and summer enrichment programs focusing on developing the academic, social, emotional, and physical needs of unduplicated students. Unduplicated students are any student that qualifies for one or more programs, including free or reduced lunch, foster youth, or an English learner. As a result of the ELOP program, there is now a second provider on campus. The cost of maintenance, building rehabs and repairs, and construction of new Adventure Club sites have increased substantially. The installation of new Adventure Club buildings have increased approximately 64%. For some perspective, when we installed Riego Creek Adventure Club in 2020, the cost was $385,000. Just this past year, we opened up Westbrook Adventure Club at the cost of $634,000. Rex Fortune, the newest Adventure Club site in the Center School District, is currently in construction and has a project budget of $637,000. Lastly, staff recruitment continues to be challenging. The requirements to work in a state-licensed program tend to present challenges when recruiting qualified youth development staff. PRL continues to work diligently in addressing our challenges. One way we do this is conducting annual benchmarking studies of other childcare sites throughout the area to ensure we are competitive in the market while still providing an exceptional and affordable option for families. In an effort to minimize our fund deficit, we have increased our daily tuition fees 20% over the past four years and intend to increase another 10% over the next two years. We have restructured our summer adventure camp program as a full-week commitment versus a day-to-day registration. As of today, we have over 4,600 registrations. That's up 10% from last summer and we're still accepting registrations. We have deferred much-needed building maintenance replacement and rehab over the past several years and maintained what we could in-house with our outstanding park maintenance and building maintenance staff. And staff recruitment is one of our ongoing top priorities. Our leadership staff spend countless hours developing strategies to recruit new staff to youth development. Some of those strategies include marketing on social media, visiting high schools and college campuses, posting on their job boards, doing classroom presentations, attending and hosting job fairs, and participating on the Sierra College's Early Childhood Education Advisory Committee. This year, we've hired over 15 new staff from various job fairs. And lastly, we are in the beginning stages in developing a strategic plan for youth development that will further identify our strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results. This plan will set a roadmap for the future of youth, of the youth development program.
Well, I'm proud that we have some real experts that are providing the youth development programs for PRL. As we've mentioned, we have decades of experience in the field of after-school programming and we all know how vital these programs are to children and to their families. So on this slide, we've included some information from the After School Alliance, which is a national organization working to ensure that all children have access to affordable, quality after-school programs. After School Alliance research shows that after-school programs in California keep kids safe, they inspire learning, and they give working parents peace of mind. In after-school programs, kids discover who they are and what they love to do, they make smart choices, and they avoid risky behaviors. 78% of parents report that their child's participation in after-school programming helps the parents meet their workday obligations. 75% of parents agree that after-school programs increase their child's interest in school. And 83% of parents note the peace of mind that after-school programs offers them. So to speak a bit more about PRL's role in after-school programming, I thought I'd share with you the information on this slide. I've heard it asked, why Parks and Recreation is in the childcare business? But what we offer is far more than childcare. We provide before and after-school recreation programs, actually, youth enrichment programs that happen to be offered in locations and hours that can meet a family's childcare needs. And according to the National Recreation and Park Association, local park and recreation agencies are the leading providers of childcare in our nation. Park and recreation agencies offer summer camps, after-school programming, preschool programs, before-school programming, and men, many offer full-time daycare. And park and recreation agencies like ours, serving communities with a population greater than 1,000, 100,000, are more likely to offer these out-of-school time programs.
So participation, our participant feedback is extremely important to us and we value new ideas and areas for improvement. We evaluate our families annually. The information you see before you on this slide is feedback we received from our most recent survey. 97% of families feel that Adventure Club staff are courteous, attentive, and knowledgeable. 91% feel that activities and curriculum are enjoyable and engaging. 96% feel Adventure Club is a safe place for their child. 94% of Adventure Club families would recommend Adventure Club to another family. And 95% feel Adventure Club meets or exceeds their expectations and value and an overall positive experience. Not only do we survey our families, but this year new, we are including the students in our feedback process, which will be very interesting. Their voice matters and we will truly, they will truly tell us how they feel about their experience. As you can see, the Adventure Club program is highly valued and a necessity for our families. I can say with confidence that we have the best, most caring and creative staff providing this exceptional program. We do, we do provide subsidized care in our Adventure Club program. Our ability to do this is a positive and much-needed value to the families who are unable to afford to pay for before and after-school care. At Kirby and Woodbridge Elementary Schools, we partner with the Roseville City School District to provide ACES, our After School Education and Safety Program, at no cost to any family. The ACES program was created with funds from a voter initiative, approved initiative, Prop 49 in 2002. We provide enrichment classes that include visual and performing arts, music, physical activity, health and nutrition, and general recreation. Currently, we have over 187 children attending the ACES program. And at Woodbridge and Kaseburg Elementary Schools, we provide subsidized care for eligible families through the California Department of Social Services grant. In addition to providing much-needed before and after-school programs for these families for free or at reduced fees, we also assist them with locating community resources, ranging from food or diaper banks, to housing referrals, to parenting classes. Currently, we have approximately 88 children in the grant program. Neither the subsidies received from the Roseville City School District nor those received from the state are sufficient to meet all program expenses, so our enterprise fund picks up the difference. We recognize that it's important that youth development programs are affordable for families. At the same time, we need to consider our costs and change, and charge fair market value for these programs. Therefore, annually, staff conduct market comparisons with other providers to ensure our competitive pricing. Providing subsidized programs is absolutely in alignment with PRL's purpose and mission. However, subsidized care programs and rising costs puts additional pressure on balancing the Youth Development Fund. Unlike PRL's general fund, programs and facilities, being in the enterprise fund means that youth development program revenues must cover all expenses, including subsidized programs, Adventure Club facilities, and other non-operating expenses. These non-operating expenses include internal service fund expenses such as facility maintenance, IT-related expenses, city indirect costs, facility loan payments for previously constructed buildings, new building construction, and Adventure Club facility rehab expenses. As we consider program costs, we know that if we price our Adventure Club to cover all of these expenses, the programs would be unaffordable for families and above the market for these services. We are pleased that operationally, we, we cost recover, cost recovery in recent years has been over 100%, covering all of the program's direct expenses of staff, materials, and supplies. This means we're covering some of the non-operating costs, but not all of them. As I alluded to in the last slide, building As I alluded to in the last slide, building expenses have become an increasing expense to the program that cannot be fully supported by user fees. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, the city owns 21 Adventure Club buildings. Of those 21 buildings, 15 or nearly 80% are over 20 years old, with seven of those buildings being over 30 years old. These are modular buildings that require more maintenance and rehab than maybe the typical brick-and-mortar building. Some of those maintenance, repair, and replacement projects include, but certainly not limited to, flooring replacement, roof repair and replacement, HVAC, painting, cabinets and counters, and plumbing. This year, we developed a 10-year improvement plan to addressing the aging Adventure Club buildings, prioritizing the sites that are in need of the most critical rehab. Here you see a snapshot of our 10-year improvement plan listing all of our Adventure Club sites, the age of each facility, and the estimated rehab replacement costs each year through fiscal year 2034. We recognize there is a lot of information on this slide, but wanted to simply provide this as a visual showing the detail of our comprehensive 10-year plan. Our team has worked in collaboration with building maintenance and park maintenance to identify our inventory and their estimated repair and replacement cycles. The highest expense is $809,000 in fiscal year '25, as we worked to catch up on many years of deferred maintenance. These expenses tapered down in subsequent years. Tonight, we are asking council's approval of a budget adjustment to appropriate $809,000 from the fiscal year 2022-23 year-end budget surplus to make the much-needed improvements identified in year one of the 10-year plan.
And in addition to sharing all of this information with you tonight, another of our goals is to ensure that these important programs remain viable. For this reason, we've developed a youth development funding policy for your consideration. It states that our youth development program shall generate revenues to support all direct program expenses, excluding the losses by subsidized programs, building-related expenses, and certain city indirect and internal fund obligations only if needed. This means that it will continue to be the expectation that youth development program revenues cover all operational expenses, including staff, materials, and supplies. Additionally, the funding policy states that PRL staff will actively manage the program to minimize general fund support. We will establish a multi-year pricing plan in an effort to meet our increasing expenses, yet remain within market prices. We will define staffing parameters to maximize our staff's efficiencies, and we'll establish annual cost recovery targets so that we can budget accordingly and reduce the program's impact to the general fund. So in closing, tonight, we request that council continue to support our vital youth development programs and approve the youth development funding policy as included in your council packet and as outlined on this slide. Additionally, we request council's approval of a budget adjustment to appropriate $809,000 of general fund resources from the FY '23 year-end budget surplus to appropriately maintain our 21 city-owned Adventure Club buildings. And at this time, Jeff and I will stand for any questions that you have.
Council questions?
It's just a question. It just sounds like a lot of your costs are your aged buildings. You said maintenance, but it looks like you're going to have to replace buildings. So maybe after this year, you'll still have expenses that'll go on, but it may be a little bit less possibly because if you... Well, you have 21 sites, and you want to do like eight buildings, and they're like now $600,000 apiece. It's pretty pricey. But unfortunately, this is what we've been seeing in a lot of things. Yeah, I just want to get... I kind of get the feeling that if we can get ahead of the maintenance, we'd be in a better position.
Yeah, and we are not looking to replace any of our existing buildings. We're just looking to provide the appropriate maintenance for them.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, I'll open it up for public comment. I'll close.
Can I address the people?
Right here.
Yeah.
They'll hear you talking to me.
Yeah. I should... Okay. Of the 21 buildings or sites for the Adventure Clubs and all of the after-school programs, where are they primarily located, these 21? Are they east or west Roseville, most of them? And there's a reason for that, is there? Does the council know?
Yeah, I mean, I'll...
Okay. Okay.
Is there any other comment or question?
On that, yes, because I know that there are... I also work with Ike Middle School, okay, in their after-school program, which is at the church. And that's the same area in which one of the gentlemen was talking about the lack of... There used to be a crossing guard, there is no crossing guard, and blah, 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 and so forth. Those services, and within the last year, two years, there have been five... That's Coloma and Sunrise, that's the area that we're talking about. There have been five major accidents within block, not even a block, a half a block of a school and two major churches there. Again, services, P&amp;L, Parks and Recreation, okay? If you can't do a simple cutting down of a tree and branches, how are you going to effectively care for our children when you're talking about buildings? Everything that focuses on buildings and ribbon cutting, what about our children? What about getting the proper programs and making sure that they are available to them and partnering with the right people so that we're not having to come up with $800,000 to fund a building, for the most part? What about the children?
I'll answer your question about, in general, where they are. As you saw on the list that Jeff popped up there throughout the city, you know, all the way out to Rex Fortune, the Rex Fortune Schools. So I'll let staff provide a more detailed answer on where they are.
Each of our Adventure Club sites are on elementary school campuses. So where there's an elementary school within the city of Roseville, we have an Adventure Club site onsite.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have a public comment? I'll close public comment. I inquire if the council has any additional questions. One popped into my head, if there's... You know, there's maintenance, right? And then there's a replacement cost. I mean, you've probably done the cost-benefit analysis of just replacing it versus maintaining it and bringing it back.
Well, as we're seeing the cost of buildings, approximately, you know, $630 going up to $700,000 for a new building. And part of our plan kind of outlines and prioritizes maintenance needs. So to replace a building, I think it would be more cost-benefit for us to kind of invest in the areas that it needs maintenance.
I knew you would do the work on that, so I appreciate you looking at all the options. If there were any other questions or comments, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 7.1, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 24-198, approving the youth development program funding policy, and also adopting ordinance number 6822, authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2023-24 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshal.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for your effort on behalf of our youth, and that's really important. Next, we'll go to special requests and reports and presentations. Item 8.1, fiscal year 2024, 2025 Grants Advisory Commission Funding Recommendations. With us tonight are economic development manager Melissa Aguiano and our housing manager, Tricia Isom. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Haldeshal and councilmembers. I'm Tricia Isom, Housing Manager, filling in for Toby Thomas in the City Manager's Office tonight. And before each night, we have the funding recommendations from the Grants Advisory Commission for fiscal year 2425. Since the Grants Advisory Commission was created in 1994, the Citizens Benefit Fund has provided over $17 million to local nonprofits operating in Roseville. The REACH Fund, American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA Fund, and in past years, the Roseville Autumn Mall Community Fund provided another $1.6 million. Combined, over $18.5 million have been granted directly to nonprofits in our community that serve our residents and improve the quality of life through a variety of programs and services. City Council approved the current grant funding priorities, which reflect the community needs analysis completed in 2020. The strategic one-time grants are to be used for innovative projects or programs, capital improvements, or new initiatives. Operational mission support grants are for programs or projects that address a community need and have demonstrated effectiveness in the past. And lastly, small requests go towards new programs or supporting existing operations and are for requests of up to $10,000. Local nonprofits submitted a total of 42 applications this last cycle. Staff reviewed all applications, and four were deemed incomplete. The 38 remaining applications were reviewed and scored by the commissioners. And even though increased funds were available for this round due to additional ARPA funds, it was still very challenging for the commissioners as the funds requested totaled over $1 million this year. The applications received represented all five social determinants of health, with health and wellness category continuing to be the most popular application type. And as mentioned, the commission has the most difficult job to rate and rank each of the applications. I do not envy them in this task as the nonprofits continue to propose remarkable programs for our residents. The commission recommends that 23 of the 38 qualified applications receive funding. 20 of the grants are recommended at full funding, and only three applications are recommended to receive partial funding. The specific recommendations were provided with the council communication as attachment one. At this time, staff recommends that council adopt the Grants Advisory Commission recommendations to fund 23 grants in the amount of $621,270 between Citizens Benefit Fund, ARPA, and REACH Funds. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. We also have Vice Chair Parker and Commissioner Criss available in the audience to speak to any questions council may have.
Your presentation. Counsel, any questions? I'll open it up for public comment.
Yeah, I'm Vanessa Reed, the Chair for Grants Advisory Commission, and this is...
I'm Neva Parker. I'm the Vice Chair of the Grants Advisory Commission. And so we just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity. It was... I always knew Roseville was great, but I had absolutely no idea the level of kindness and compassion that's within the community. And so it was just a really great opportunity to serve on the commission. So I want to say thank you very much.
Yeah. Echoing that, too, I mean, we had a lot of applicants and more funding, so that made it harder, but there was a lot of discussions and great analysis, and we have takeaways of how we want to move forward and continue to improve the process, including gaining feedback from surveys from applicants and also revisiting our process in terms of our criteria when we meet again. So we're constantly looking on how to improve it and getting feedback from our applicants. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. Ed Criss, Roseville resident, but also speaking as a member of the Grants Commission. It was a great experience to be able to go through this, and every year, I'm always amazed at the number of applicants that come in with the amazing work that's being done in Roseville. And you saw that this was a program that was established and started back in the 90s by the leadership of Roseville at the time. Some of you are very familiar with that leadership decision. But over $18 million, that's not insignificant money, and it's had a significant impact on the quality of life in the city of Roseville. And that's one of the things that the consultant that helped us with the needs assessment said. It was... This is uncommon for communities to be able to do that, to pour that investment back into the nonprofits that are working for the benefit of the community. So thank you for your offering me the opportunity to be able to participate in that. I think you put together a good team that was able to help review those applications to take the direction that you had provided to us and make the recommendation that is before you tonight. So it was a great experience. You'd always think that it'd be fun and easy to give away money. It's not. There's a lot of decisions, and unfortunately, you say no when there's more requests than there are funds available. But it was still an opportunity to be able to have an impact in the community. So if you have any questions, we're here to ask or answer those. But one final thing, I'm going to put this... Maybe staff was going to give a little bit of a commercial. At our last meeting, we had one of our longstanding commissioners term out. She had been on the commission for 10 years, and she will be greatly missed because of that historical perspective. But that provides an opportunity for other people that might be interested in serving on a commission of this... of the Grants Commission to be able to be considered. So if there's somebody out there in the viewing public that might be interested in participating in this, put your application in. I think the clerk's office is running that process for candidates for you to be able to consider fulfilling that vacant position. All right, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have public comment?
Good evening. I'm Leilani Freitas, the very proud CEO at the Placer SPCA, and I want to thank the Grants Advisory Commission for their recommendation and for your consideration to approve our $50,000 application to help fund the building of the Placer SPCA's Veterinary and Foster Care Center. We are the only nonprofit animal welfare agency that will have a facility in the South Placer region providing much-needed accessible spay, neuter, and wellness services to our community's pet owners in addition to meeting the needs of our homeless and abandoned animals entering our shelter. The cost of the center is in the neighborhood of $11.5 million, and I'm pleased to share with you that after one year of our fundraising efforts, we have raised over $10.8 million to date. We are prepared to break ground this summer, and we are scheduled to open the Veterinary and Foster Care Center in the fall of 2025. We know this will be a tremendous community benefit, and I thank you again for your consideration.
Additional public comment? Close public comment and bring it back to the council to see if they have any additional questions or comments.
I watched that whole video on YouTube, and man, I did not... The last, when they were scoring everything and going down with the totals, did not envy you. Sure, I'm glad you guys took on that role. I know that was a lot of tough decisions made there, and I appreciate everything that's done because I know it's very difficult to try to score awesome organizations, so...
I did as well, and it is difficult because there are some folks that were not funded that certainly are worthy of funding, and hopefully, they'll be back in future years. So unless there's any other questions or comments, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 8.1, we will actually have several motions. For our first motion, I'm going to ask Councilmember Rakucci to please excuse herself from the dais, as she will not be able to participate on the discussion or vote on the grant funding for the Roseville Historical Society due to a conflict as her spouse is a board member. Thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor, at this time, may I please have a motion to approve the grant funding for the Roseville Historical Society?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshal.
Yes.
Again, the record will reflect that Councilmember Rakucci did not participate on the voter discussion on this matter. Okay, with that, we'll start our second motion. If we can have Councilmember Rakucci come back. For our second motion, we're going to request that Councilmember Albert and Mendoza please excuse themselves from the dais. They will not participate in the discussion or the vote for the Roseville Police Activities League, or ARPA, as both have a conflict due to their board membership. All right, now that we can move on with our motion, may I please have a motion to approve the grant funding for the Roseville Police Activities League, ARPA? the grant funding for the Roseville Police Activities League, ARPAL?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshel.
Yes.
Thank you. If I can have Councilmember Mendoza come back. Okay, for our third motion, Councilmember Albert will be excused from the dais and will not participate in the discussion or the vote for Wayfinder Family Services as his spouse receives income from the organization. With that, may I please have a motion to approve the grant funding for Wayfair Family Services?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshel.
Yes.
Thank you. If I can have Councilmember Albert return back to the dais. Okay, so there will be a correction to the third motion. It is a member of the family who is involved with the organization, so I do apologize for the erroneous indication of his spouse. So for our fourth and final motion, we will have the City Council consider approving all the remaining grant funding recommendations for cycle 2425. If I can please have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshel.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed as you announced.
Thanks for your good work. Next up, we'll have item 8.2, Proposed Council Compensation Charter Amendment Language. Our Assistant City Attorney Joe Speaker and our City Attorney Michelle Scheidenberger will provide the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pull the presentation up, please. Thank you. So good evening, Mayor Haldeshel, members of the City Council. My name is Joe Speaker. I'm your Assistant City Attorney for the city of Roseville. I'm before you this evening to present proposed City Council Compensation Charter language. So tonight, I'm seeking direction on proposed Roseville Charter Amendment language related to City Council compensation. And just to be clear, future City Council action and a ballot measure requiring voter approval would be necessary to amend the Roseville Charter. In order to meet the deadlines for having language related to a ballot measure to the Placer County election officials in time for the November 2024 general election, staff must have the final verbiage to present to the City Council by the next City Council meeting on June 19th, which means we need final direction tonight on that verbiage. As you know, the city of Roseville is a full-service city, which means we have our own utilities, police, fire, parks, libraries, et cetera. We are a council manager form of government in which responsibilities are vested in the City Council and the City Manager. In this form of government, the City Council's role is that of a legislative policymaking body, which determines not only the local laws that regulate community life, but also determines public policy and gives direction to the City Manager and City Attorney. Roseville is a charter city, which means the City and the City Council derive their powers directly from the California Constitution, subject to limitation in its charters and the legislature. Roseville's five City Council members serve the entire city through a district-based system where they are elected by districts every four years. The Roseville City Council is currently paid a salary of $600 a month, with the mayor receiving an additional $50 a month. These amounts were established over 23 years ago in the year 2000. At the last charter review in 2020, the then Charter Review Commission, who was appointed to recommend any amendments to the charter, made a recommendation that City Council compensation be increased using a very specific population-based model. The then City Council, citing economic uncertainty and a pandemic, decided not to place that amendment on the ballot. So the current Roseville Charter, Section 3.05, is provided on the screen before you. As it is currently written, Section A sets the exact salary amounts and ties it to a population-based model. Section B allows for reimbursement of necessary expenses. As you will recall, at City Council's Strategic Planning Workshop on February 28, 2024, there was a request by council for staff to come back to a council meeting with detailed data from other jurisdictions related to council compensation. Staff returned to the March 20, 2024 City Council meeting and made that requested presentation. Specifically, at the March 20, 2024 City Council meeting, staff presented recent changes in state law related to maximum compensation for council members in general law cities. Based on changes in state law, council members in general law cities with a population size similar to Roseville, with a bracket of 150,000 to 250,000 people, could now receive up to $2,550 per month in salary. Based on this change in the law related to general law cities, staff sought direction from the City Council with regard to whether council wanted to place a charter amendment on the ballot for the 2024 general election to ask the voters to adjust council compensation, and if so, what they wanted that charter amendment to look like. After a robust discussion and details on council compensation from the various other agencies in the region and around the state, including other full-service cities, council directed staff to come back with proposed charter language that accomplished the things listed on the screen. Specifically, council directed staff to return with the proposed amendment, the defaulted to the maximum limits under state law for general law cities of a similar population size, provide for an automatic inflationary adjustment each year, allow that compensation to be adjusted in the future through an ordinance amendment requiring at least two public meetings rather than a charter amendment, and have that new compensation amount be effective immediately upon voter approval and for future changes upon ordinance adoption. So with all of that in mind, based on that previous direction, the slide before you is some proposed Roseville Charter Amendment language. This language is being presented as a possible option but can be modified tonight. Section A contains the verbiage accomplishing the direction from council on March 20. I wanted to note that Section B before you was not something that council specifically mentioned at the March 20 meeting, but it is slightly different than your current charter language, Section B, because staff is proposing some slight modifications in verbiage to clarify compliance with IRS and state law requirements. Ultimately, in order to meet the deadline for placing a measure on the November 2024 ballot, we need to have the final verbiage decided on tonight. So at this time, I want to go ahead and pause the presentation to give you an opportunity to read the language on the slot, on the screen, which I'm sorry, I realize is much smaller now that it's blown up that way. And so I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to review that. We'll pause, let you do that, and then we can engage in a discussion on that verbiage in front of you. And just a reminder, at the end of the day, staff is seeking a majority consensus on that final verbiage to be placed on the ballot. So with that, we'll go ahead and pause. And as a reminder, the language in front of you is the proposed charter language. That is not the same as the ballot question language, which would be different. That's the question that goes to the voters. This is the formal language that would live in our city charter.
Mayor, how do you want us to go? Do you want us to go each one?
So...
How do you want us to...
Absolutely, your guys' call. I figured normally, obviously, there's a presentation, the presentation concludes, and then you guys engage in a discussion. I thought for purposes of that discussion, it would be beneficial to keep this slide up, so...
Thank you, Councilmember Rakuchi.
Is there more following this that we need to wait? So the only thing after this slide is a, the recommendation is this evening for you, which is, or the request, which is to give direction with regard to what the final proposed charter amendment language would be for the November 2024 ballot. And so if we want to go back to that slide, then you guys can have that in front of you to kind of look at and work through as we have the discussion.
Councilmember Rakuchi, you want to, do you have a question or comment or question on this?
Well, I just questioned on our formality on how to go because I have comments on each of the items that we're going to discuss, so, you know.
Why don't you go ahead? You have comments or questions?
I don't have questions. I have comments.
Councilmember Rakuchi, Mendoza, do you have any questions?
I have comments, so I'll wait.
Councilman Albert?
Same thing.
Vice Mayor Bernusconi?
Same. No questions, just comments.
I have a question. So if you could go back to the original, to the current language in the, in the charter?
Yeah, and that is on slide...
I think it's the slide right before this?
Yeah, five.
Yeah, right there. In here, it says, okay, yeah, I thought I read in there maximum somewhere, limitation, maximum, but now I don't see it. I just want to make sure that what you had proposed on that one slide was consistent with the existing charter language. Is there, was I, maybe it was on SB 329. I thought I saw a maximum limit somewhere in one of these slides, so help me out here because I thought I saw a maximum limit.
There was a slide related in the previous presentation specifically related, and I think what you're thinking of is, I mentioned in the presentation, that under state law, the change in state law with regard to general law cities gives a range for the general law cities. So based on population size, general law cities have a range that, for what that salary compensation can be. And so there's a minimum and a maximum, and so there's that range. And I think that's what you're referring to with regard to the maximum of no more than, and that it leaves a salary range.
So that's what SB 329 says?
Yes, the state law that passed correct with regard to general law cities. So it gives a population bracket, and actually, I included, I have, I have a set of slides to help kind of guide this, and so if we, if we want to go to, it's slide number, pardon me.
So, well, just...
Slide number 12, that has what I think you're referring to there with regard to the ranges.
Under this, up to 35,000, so Colfax, Loomis, Auburn, all fall in that, so they could increase, and those are all general law cities, they could increase their compensation up to $950 a month.
That's correct.
Rockland and Lincoln fall into the 50 to 75, so they could increase their compensation up to 1,600.
That's correct.
Did the Charter Review Commission, in their analysis and their recommendation, look at the total compensation, including medical, dental, car allowances, and other things?
Yeah, that's correct. So when the charter, the 2020 Charter Review Committee looked at, Commission looked at, now it's a committee, it was then a commission, looked at the compensation, they looked at, and what they ultimately recommended was a model that was 15 cents per Roseville resident or the average of the annual salary for the council members of Lincoln, Citrus Heights, Rockland, Elk Grove, and Folsom, taking into consideration salary and benefits. And so it was, that's what the, how the Charter Commission looked at it back in 2020, was a, was a combination of salary and benefits.
And as you said, I think it was a seven-member, was it a nine-member commission?
I believe that would end up being seven is what that was. You can correct me, Michelle, you remember.
I don't remember.
Sorry, I...
That's okay.
I looked at a lot of things related to the Charter Commission, and I forgot to look at the number of members, but they, they recommended to the council, as you said.
Yeah.
And because of the uncertainty, it was a very, I think they recommended it to us in March of 2020, and we didn't know if April or, or May of 2020 was even going to exist, right, at that point in time. So the council, and I was on the council, chose not to put it on the ballot, right? And they looked at, in determining their 15 cents, did they determine how much the city of Roseville per capita compensation was?
So I believe when they looked at it, they, they looked at, they did look at that, you say per capita, that, that was the ultimate language they chose, was the per capita. And in that 15 cents, it was the lesser of the 15 cents or that average between the per capita annual benefits and salary of those five jurisdictions, based on, obviously, the 2020 numbers, which is what they had the benefit of looking at.
So the action you're asking us for is really whether we want to resurrect and put before the voters this question? Is that the ultimate?
Yeah, so I think technically at the last meeting, you gave the direction that you wanted to put something before the voters. So the item before you this evening is what that something is. So the item before you is to figure out what that language ultimately looks like, if that's the direction you want to go ultimately, and then ultimately what that language looks like. And so I, like I said, I put together verbiage, but the whole point is to have that discussion, to be able to figure out whether that verbiage is still the verbiage that you want to look at. You know, it's one thing I recognize to say it, and other than look at it once it's all written down, and that's what I was trying to provide for you this evening.
And the language on that slide that you asked us to take a time to look at is language that is similar to another charter city, Chico, California? Is that...
The first part is very similar where there's the default to the maximum, because again, there's a range, under that state law for general law cities. And so that is, that is very similar to how the city of Chico, which is another charter city, has their verbiage, that is correct.
And I believe they put a charter, they put a charter amendment on in 2004 that now...
Ties it to the, the increase at the general law city level.
Right, so earlier this year in December, or December of last year and January of this year, they were able to do through two hearings, adjust their salaries.
It, it actually took effect immediately, automatically, as a result of that charter language. They did have a meeting on it, though, to provide transparency.
They'd be required for the, just like any general city.
Yeah, for the ordinance amendment, that's correct.
Okay, thanks. Those are my questions. Any, any questions? Any other questions?
I just want to see how we can go through this pretty systematically. You know, I mean, I know we're talking about one here. I'd like to either, you know, go on this one, maybe if, talk about compensation, whether it's a vote of the people, it's, you know, the, each of those things that have come up so that we can actually know where we're, where we're, where we're at.
Is this, is this the only proposal, or is there an alternative proposal?
So I prepared some, some different alternatives just because I wanted to help keep the discussion moving. And so one other alternative that I proposed is essentially our existing language that we have now, but with new limits inserted into it. So rather than have that direct default to the, to the state law, it would simply use the existing framework that we have, but then give you the discretion to update the numbers to reflect a number, the actual dollar amount, to be a number that you believe is appropriate, given everything. So you, you can default to the state law, or you could keep the existing model. So I do have a version that is similar, it's identical to our existing, but with a, with a fill-in-the-blank for whatever number you actually want. So basically updating the population and updating the council compensation, but keeping the rest of it the same as our existing model. That's one. And I also have the same list of questions that we went through back in March that we could go through if you want to, to go back through those and, and look at it, but I have all of that for you. So you just let me know what you, what you're interested in looking at.
Just real quick, and then Joe, on that, on that, what you just suggested, the fill-in-the-blank version, that then would basic, if I remember our discussion that you had with all of us, that would catch us up as far as a track, and then we would, it would then be revisited at the next charter review, which would be 2030, right?
Yep, it could, absolutely. So that gives you the ability to set it now, to update it, because like I said, 20, 2000 last time it was updated, and then we evaluate our charter at least every 10 years through that charter review.
And because we didn't do it in 2020 for obvious reasons, we're four years, you know, not want to say behind, but you know, we're, we're in 2024. By doing it now, if we chose to go that route, then 2030 rolls around, we could essentially, if, if we're good, stay on track from that point forward.
That's correct.
And make it in every 10-year based on the census.
That's correct.
So we would be doing a service to future councils by putting us back on track.
And you could do that, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Bruce, I like, I like, you know, what you said here about using the same framework that we had before. I feel we are a charter city. I want to look what charter cities do, and I don't mind looking at what the state law is, but I want to, I want to look under what's best for charter city, and if we're picking a number and looking at it, it's something that the council picked. So I'm, I'm, I like that. Then we need to go, to me, other things to talk about, you know, and amount of money, I think the ones that we've been talking about seem pretty reasonable, but, but if the question is, do we want, do we want to pick our own and have it on there and not, not, not choose one that's according to state law?
So if I could, updating the current charter language and putting a number in there, is that what you're...
That council picks. There's other things, you know, like I still believe in putting it up, if it was put on that it was, then the vote of the people when it went to a next time, but that's another subject that we're...
To slide 11, if that's possible, you can see, yeah, that is what I was proposing there, which is our existing language, but I've updated, because obviously our population size has increased. We actually just got the latest Department of Finance numbers, so we're, we are just over 154,000 people based on the newest Department of Finance estimation. So currently, our charter has lower population limits because we were smaller population in 2000, so I've updated the... So I've updated the population numbers, and then I've left a blank for the filling in the blank for a dollar amount. And that, it would give you the ability to use the existing framework, the existing language, updated based, obviously based on the population, and then insert dollar amounts into that. That's another option. And this, like I said, uses the existing language that we have, and you would be choosing essentially a dollar, a dollar amount.
And does preceding federal census revert back to 2020 in the, just, I can't say this word, you can.
The decennial.
What is it called?
Decennial.
Decennial, yes. So we'll go back to.
Yeah, and so the way that, that section B is added, which is meant to make this part cleaner for us, but the, what that does is it allows for us to use the preceding federal census or subsequent census, if for some reason a census is done less, or more frequently than 10 years, which the Census Bureau can always do, or the latest validated California Department of Finance numbers. And we get those validated California Department of Finance numbers every year. That's the number that we just got recently. And so we just got that number, and the current Roseville population based on that number is 154,329 people. So I'm still proposing keeping the lower population amount, even though we're above 150, only because we're so close to that existing threshold right now. And that's the same way our existing charter language is set up.
Okay. Councilwoman, Grushy, any other?
Not on, not on, on this, until we start talking about costs, but that's, that's.
I have several comments too, but I almost.
Still have the same effect date, right?
Yes.
Public, oh, and.
I'm sorry.
I was just clarifying, this has the same effect date, both options have the same effect date.
Okay. All right, if there are any, do you have?
No, I mean, at this point.
Need additional direction?
I'm here to give you resources for the discussion and help guide it, and then, like I said, I've got various slides from previous presentation to kind of help with that, facilitate that discussion. But I, we have some different options, and I just wanted to present them to you for that discussion. So I'm, I'm here to help you facilitate that.
So the more, the more I look at stuff, the, the less, less confident I am of my memory of, of March, but I don't recall the council being unanimous in wanting to have an automatic inflation in that. Is my, my memory's prob, is my memory accurate?
So I, I felt that there was direction to at least come back with that as an option, but.
Majority, but not, not, and a consensus, but not.
Yeah, I, that, that's how I would characterize that, perhaps a majority versus a universe, unanimous consensus. But nonetheless, I, I believe what I heard was to come back, at least with an option that included that inflationary to look at based on the majority. And so that's why that other one, the other verbiage that I had before this was presented that has that similar kind of language, and then also that tied it directly to the state law, whatever the, the maximum was, depending on population size.
If the adjustment wasn't in there, the future council, because this is really going to impact future councils, could come back through an ordinance process and adjust the compensation by having two public hearings, is that?
If, if the prior verbiage, the proposed verbiage, not this one that's on the slide, but that proposed one that I paused on earlier, if that was on there, that allows for this to, for the language to no longer need a charter amendment, it would be adopted via ordinance in the future. But that language had an inflationary adjustment. You could always remove that section with the inflationary adjustment, and then you would be able to do it via ordinance. But this particular language in front of you is our existing framework, which would still require the charter amendment anytime it's amended, and that could be reevaluated in 2030 or whenever. But this current language, as worded, would require a charter amendment, not just a ordinance amendment to modify something.
Okay. Any other questions? You have a slide that you want to ask us specific questions?
So I have the slide, if you recall, from the March 20th, where we went through the same kind of questions. So that's kind of, we can go through what you guys looked at last time, what questions you answered last time to get to that earlier proposed verbiage, and so I'm happy to pull that up if that's helpful for you. If you like this verbiage, we can talk about this. If you like that other, we can talk about that. It's really kind of your call.
Yeah, what's the council's preference?
Would it be okay to take public comment, and then we can discuss more? I'd like to hear if anybody has.
I just want to know what public's going to, well, I guess we'll open it up for public comment on both, both options.
I'm the Reverend Marsha Hansen, deacon at St. John's Episcopal Church in Roseville. Compensation is a very important part to keep everybody focused and have the incentive to do a good job. I think the only thing that I take exception to is the issue about the automatic inflation. When you look at all your working people and such that you're working to make this a good city for, they don't have that as an option. And for the city council to take it, I'm not sure that that sets a good example for them. So that's my thought about that. The rest of it, looks like you've already got a good lead from all the other cities. So thank you.
Any other public comment? Back to the council. Questions? Or do you want us to take us, take us through that slide you have at the end? What's the council's preference?
I think just to move the conversation along, it would be helpful for us to see way in where we are, because if we're not in consensus or have a majority on where we are, then it doesn't make sense to wordsmith something that we're not comfortable with in the first place.
I do have one more question. So this is taxable income to council members, salary as a taxable income.
Yes, that's correct.
So where, how do we want to proceed? Where is every, where are everybody?
I'll start, I'll start, just to get us going. So thank you for your research on this and coming back with us. I know that we, this is something that's been tossed around for years, from 2020 to our goal strategy workshop to March. And there's no doubt in my mind that this is a net loss for all of us that are here. I mean, we know that, we knew that when we took the job. Most of us, this job costs us money, and we don't do it for the money, we do it because we want to make sure that our city stays a nice place for families to live in. But since we have left, and I've come, talked to the community and done some research, talked to a few community members, I have more concerns at this point that really don't have me comfortable moving forward. Well, I feel like, first is, I feel like we're under the gun, you know, we're being, you know, we're on, under the gun right now to get something on the ballot for November. I don't thi, it's not that I don't think that it's warranted, but I have concerns around, there's another transportation sales tax measure that has been worked on for the last eight years, barely passed, or barely failed in 2016, didn't happen in 2020, looks like it's going to be on the ballot in 2024. And even though these are from two separate pots of funds, I don't know that the public will really have a distinction between the difference of being asked for more money. So they'll see us as wanting to increase our own pay, they'll see a increase in the sales, transportation sales tax. That has a concern, I don't want to have that derailed, I feel like that is really for the greater good for our community to weigh in on that. I have concerns around just a single charter item happening in 2024. I feel like, you know, it should wait until 2023, or we have more things to put on there, or at least give us more time, maybe for potentially 2026. You know, I think there's limited resources when it comes to having a campaign that would be able to support this. I don't, it's, there's only so much resources and financially that people would be able to support or get an education campaign going. Ultimately, I, another part too, I'm not sure if the language is in there, but we, it doesn't disclose what the actual stipend would be. I guess that would be an option for us to put that in there. But I think just timing is everything, and for me, this isn't it.
Others?
I can follow on that one. I agree with Vice Mayor Bernasconi on that. I think putting out the ballot right now is, is not a good time. I think it's also, you know, this is going to be a presidential race at this time, there's other ballot, there's other things that are coming on, on the ballot. I think people are more concerned really about inflation of anything, and I don't think they, they, they look at one as being their gas prices or their food prices or this. I think they look at this as their life has really been pretty hectic and real, real expensive, and all they see is price tags all the time. I think what we're asking for is good, I just think it's not the right time, and I would be more interested in 2024, some, a time like that.
26?
2026, yes, sorry. But I, but I think as far as having a compensation and that kind of discussion is good, but I don't, I think it's, it's too rushed and not really a good time right now.
Others? Councilman Albert, you mentioned you had some comments?
I do. So first of all, I have to say the, the council compensation right now, when you compare it to other jurisdictions, it is embarrassing that Roseville being such an incredible city, we're, we're paid so horribly little compared to other places. I knew what I signed up for, absolutely not complaining about that. But I think whoever, and if you're out there still alive, I forgive you, but whoever set that compensation way back then didn't look down the road very long, because it's, it's very inadequate. I know people that will not run for council because they say it's just, for all the work you do, it's just not worth the pay, because it's going to cut into your business, cut into your, your livelihood. And so I, I do think we need to get the compensation up, and I, I think the public needs to make that decision, not us. But that's, you know, we don't have assistants on staff that help us, that are dedicated to us, and so it is a lot of work. And we also serve on a bunch of boards and commissions, all of us do. And so it's not just this, it's a bunch of other things that we serve, and the homework assignments get pretty crazy. But with 7,200 a year, you can kind of justify sloughing and not really doing much of anything because you're really not paid much. And I would like to see us held a little bit more accountable for that as well. I do think that there's definite justification for changing the salary. I do not like the idea of not having some kind of an inflationary increase, otherwise down the road somebody's going to look back and go, who were those idiots that did that way back when it was just that amount of money? And there was no increase built in. Obviously, going just with the CPI index or something is, it might not be the way to go, maybe we go slightly less, but something that helps it increase. I also am not, I don't want it to be any way tied to population increase, because I don't want to ever have council be accused of, oh, you're just growing so you can get paid more, because that seems like that's a bad idea too. So I think we just set a number and, and go with that, but have some kind of an increase so it stays reasonable. And, let's see. And my, my other big concern is I've heard from a lot of people that are tied to the, the potential transportation tax that would be on our ballot this fall, and it does seem like it will be on the ballot. And a lot of these people that have talked about it have really strong concerns about having just another item from Roseville could possibly disincentivize somebody for voting for that transportation tax. That is so critical, I think, to our future. We've got to make sure that the, the population has that option to vote for it, and, and I do think this would muddle that. And again, I'm, I'm turning out, this is not going to affect me, but I, I do think we ought to just hold off and let that, that ballot measure go through without any excuse being attached to it to possibly harm it. But I hope future council will get this on a ballot, and I don't think we need to wait for a charter, I think you guys should do it in two years and let the voters decide. And I think the voters are the ones that need to decide, and I'm against anything, any wording where we have the ability as a council to change our salary. We need to set it, and only voters can change it, because it's so self-interested to, to allow us to have any kind of qualification of choosing extra pay or whatever, it just doesn't seem appropriate that we should do that ourselves. I think it opens up the door to a lot of accusations that shouldn't have to take place.
Councilmember Menonson?
So I, I like when things follow process. I'm a process-oriented person. I spent many years doing compliance for many organizations, and I get why we didn't do this in 2020. We all know why we didn't do this in 2020. And then 21 rolled around, 22, here we are in 24. I like the fact that we're addressing this now for the simple fact that it puts us back on track, and then 2030 comes and we get back on that 10-year thing. When we had the last presentation on March 20th of this year, one of the interesting facts that I, I took away from that slide presentation, so if you look at from 1934 to 1950, okay, that's 20 years, exactly 20 years, just bear with me for a minute, that was the la, that was the last time that, the longest period that we had, didn't have any sort of a compensation increase or adjustment. And then from there, it was basically every seven, five to seven years, and then they get to 2000, and now we're in 24, so we're in another 24-year gap. And when I look at, at the rate of that, it, it tracks with the census, it tracks everything that we've talked about here tonight. And as I look at that from a process standpoint, it flowed nicely, it was accountable, it was transparent, everything checked out, and I like that. And I think that we need, like prior councils before us, I think we, they've tried to leave future councils and the residents, you know, in a better spot, or, you know, do what they believe would be right for the future of the city, not necessarily for the people sitting behind this dais. And I think that that's what we're all challenged with here tonight. It's not a matter of, you know, the 600 extra dollars or whatever amount that we put on that, you know, I, we make $600, Vice Mayor Bernasconi and my fellow council members, we all alluded to it, we all knew what we were getting into when we took this job, and that's fine. I don't think we need to get hung up on, on, on why or why not we, we took this job and what we believed we were getting into, but I do believe that the compensation needs to be looked at. And as far as a timing issue, I agree, you know, that there's a time for everything, but I don't necessarily agree that this is in direct competition with the transportation measure that's on the ballot, that we are not taxing our residents for this. This is, this is an increase that I actually, I don't even want to throw the word increase or tax out there, my understanding, Joe, is when we put this, if this gets proposed and put on the ballot, this is, this was, we, we flow it around a cap, right? Phrasing this as a, as a council cap or compensation cap, and that's really what we're doing, because if we take the escalators out, which I know of some of our, my fellow council members have an issue with that, I'm not looking to get rich off of our taxpayers. I, I am not in support of taking benefits, retirement, you know, gas stipend, vehicle stipend, any of that. I'm just looking to adjust this in a way where we get back on the track that we have been since 1934, to set us up for the next census in 2030. I like both ideas. I obviously like option A, but I'm not unopposed to the option of where you fill in the blank. And I think that that's a more realistic approach for the here and now, and I think that might be more digestible for some of the people up here and for our voters and our residents, because then it is a, a direct tangible number. You know, they don't have to get caught up with all of the escalators, and there are certain times where it's a good idea to align with, with what the state guidelines are. I mean, we did that with our filing dates for the FPPC recently, we did that with some of our areas related to our utilities, we did it with the TOT tax to bring us in line with some of our other regional cities around us and some of the ones within our state. So I mean, alignment is good. In this particular case, I don't necessarily know if we have to align 100% with what the state says, because, you know, a lot of things that we do here in Roseville, we do contrary to the state, and that's why we're such a great city. So I don't necessarily think that aligning with them 100% is the best thing, which I think the fill in the blank option might be the best way to go here, because it takes those escalators out, it takes all of that uncertainty, and like, like Councilmember Albert said, now, the, the misconception or the perception that councils up here continuing to adjust their salary and adjusting, and adjusting and taking more and more, you know, we're, some of us won't be on this council in the future, so we can't predict behavior. But by not even putting that in there, it, it, it dismisses that, that, that chance altogether. And I think that there's some comfort that we can provide to our residents and comfort as us as a council as we make this decision tonight, that we are not setting up that potential for someone to run away, you know, with the general fund money to line our pocketbooks up here. So I, I think, I think this is, this is something that, that we should seriously consider. I think that we just need to get back on, on track from where we were, get this back on a, on a, every 10-year review process. And, and I mean, let's face it, I mean, the other jurisdictions around us, other cities, it was in the last presentation on the 20th of March, I mean, we. was in the last presentation on the 20th of March, I mean, we, for the services we provide, for the city that we are, the awards that we, there's the slide right there, for everything that we provide and the things that we all do, you know, I don't think any member of our community is going to balket, you know, a slight increase on any of what's shown up here. I just think that it's a matter of guaranteeing the public that we are not doing this for our benefit and that future councils are not going to just slam them with continual increases because that's not what I personally want, and I can't speak for my fellow councilmembers, but I don't think any of us are looking to be disingenuous to the voters or to our residents. But I think this is, this is something that we've talked about, prior councils have talked about this. When I look at this timeline that stops at 2,000, it's 24 years. A lot of things have happened in this city in 24 years. I just think it's time. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I share my colleagues' concerns and thoughtfulness regarding the transportation measure. As you know, I sit on the Classic County Transportation Planning Agency. The last full poll that we did in October, September, October of last year, and polls that were done, polling that was done before, showed that the issues that are of concern are not local taxes or wages, they're things like Ukraine, things like gas prices, things that are outside of the control. And so while I understand the perspective that some voters may tie this together, I understand it, but I don't share that perspective, and that perspective's not shared by the transportation planning folks that I speak to. I think it's, I think we can all agree that the community values our engagement with the community and the time we put in to read our packets. Tonight was a two binder because that consent calendar didn't fit in one binder, so tonight was a two binder. But I think, you know, and we've had a long history, Councilwoman Rakucci and her husband before have served the community for a long time. And so this community has benefited from having folks who are small business owners, who have been retirees, and others who could serve and give back. And Council, Vice Mayor Bernasconi, you said it on several occasions, there should not be a net loss to us. We are asked by very, a lot of nonprofits and charitable events to donate to them, and we have to make some, like our Grants Advisory Commission, we have to make some very painful decisions on where that $600 goes. We're nearly a billion-dollar entity, and I don't think Warren Buffett would pay his board members $600. I don't, you know, maybe he does, I don't know. But I think it's time to move forward and ask, and this is why I said this is not about the compensation, this is about whether we're going to ask the voters what they think. We all have conversations in the community, and we come away, and hopefully we're asking what, you know, what folks think. And so to me, I think it's time to ask the voters what they think, not tell them what we think. And I would be supportive of putting option A on the ballot, which mirrors the Chico, the Chico language, and I agree, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't just be conveniently picking up SB 329 because it applied to general law cities. I do think that, you know, and I think that at some point in time, you know, that the council should look at, or the charter review or the council should look at, look at term limits because we don't have the ability to serve in some bodies like the League of Cities and be influential in the League of Cities because we're here for eight years or, you know, if we're filling an appointment, we're here for 10 years. And that really, I believe that hamstrings the voice that the city of Roseville has. And I think that's largely my comments. You know, I think, again, I think it's time to ask the voters what they think, and I think they'll all, I think, again, everyone that I've talked to has recognized the value and the time that we put in here, and, you know, so that's where I am. Do we have a motion?
So don't we have to decide if anybody wants one or the other?
Well, we're talking about the last.
I guess there's kind of a couple thresholds. So after that discussion, at least what I heard, was I heard some not interested in doing anything right now, then I heard some do something now but have it be one option. I heard some do something now and have another option. And so I think, for me at least, it would be helpful if I have a sense of, because what I heard were two for sure not interested in doing it right now, and then I believe a third want, it needs to be done, but this isn't the time either. So I, unless I misheard, I thought I heard three interested in not proceeding at this time, given the time, and then two who were interested at this time. And so I only point that out because before going down the road of talking about the verbiage, if I heard that correctly, it would seem that we don't need to get to that phase. And so I just want, again, if I misheard, I'm all for being corrected, but that's what I heard from the discussion that we just had.
I think we should call the question.
Should we have, should we have that motion?
A question to go before the voters?
If I may.
If we go forward, I would like to have a strong opinion about what it looks like, but first, I like the idea of.
Don't have to put it before the voters?
So I guess we start with, I guess we kind of take it back and say, and, sorry, Madam Clerk.
If I may, just because I want to make sure that we understand what we're asking here tonight with the permission of Mr. Mayor. Question number one is, A, do we want to move forward with putting it on the ballot? If that's a yes, then we move to question number two, what is the language that we're going to utilize? So are we okay with that? So do you mind if I take a tally of the council? So question number one, does the council want to move forward with possibly placing a potential measure on the ballot for the 2024 city election?
I don't just want to do a roll call?
Yeah, we're going to do a roll call, correct.
You're going to motion?
Yeah, that is, that is the first question. That, yes, that is the first question. Well, it's the first question so that we can move on to the second part of the question. So question number one is, should we put a measure on the ballot for the voters to make a decision on council compensation? That's question number one. We'll start with the roll call. We'll start off with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
No.
Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Albert?
No.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci?
No.
And Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Haldashelt?
Yes.
Okay, motion dies at this point because we've got three saying no.
Make sure your presentation.
No problem.
Thank you for the direction.
Now we're going to have some fun. This is one of the most gratifying parts of serving on the council, and that's when our citizens come forward to fill vacancies on our various boards and commissions. So tonight we have Katrina Six on our Board of Appeals unscheduled vacancy appointment.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Haldashelt and councilmembers. My name is Katrina Six from the City Clerk Department. I am here tonight to present the unscheduled vacancies for the Board of Appeals. The vacancy before you tonight is due to a member resigning. Please note that the agenda indicates nine candidates. We did have one candidate withdraw. That will leave us with eight candidates to choose from. This is going to be for a partial six-month term that will be expiring December 31st of Please appoint one member from the following candidates. Carol Drubin, Mary Griffith, Sharon Lawton, Robert Powell, Louis Santiago, Austin Skates, Jay Shurgill, and Franklin Tilly.
At this time, if the council can please make their selection and pass their ballots towards me. Thank you.
Do you have public comment, though?
I'm sorry, do we have public? Thank you, Michelle. Do we have public comment on this item? Public comment or closed public comment? Everyone to vote?
Thank you. Please pass your ballots. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All those and I, say, yeah.
I will read the selection of each councilmember, and Ms. Six will tally up our votes. So Councilmember Mendoza selecting Ms. Sharon Lawton. Councilmember Rakucci selecting Louis Santiago. Councilmember Albert selecting Sharon Lawton. Vice Mayor Bernasconi selecting Sharon Lawton, and Mayor Haldashelt selecting Robert Powell.
All right, sounds like we're voting again.
How would it be, three votes for Sharon Lawton?
Yes.
One vote for Robert Powell, and one vote for Louis Santiago.
Yes, we have it. Good deal. We have a.
With that, Mr. Mayor, if I may read the motion. So on item 9.1, the city council has voted and will consider appointing Ms. Sharon Lawton to the Board of Appeals to a term expiring December 31st, 2024. If I may have a motion, please to approve.
I'll move.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yep.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashelt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks to all those who applied. There'll be more, as we heard, there'll be more vacancies coming up. Next up is a public hearing on our fiscal year 2024-25 landscaping and lighting district, amending and/or approving the Engineers' Annual Levy, ordering the levy and collection of assessments. I'll start by opening the public hearing, and I'll ask for staff's presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Haldashelt, councilmembers. My name is Dennis Kaufman. I'm the Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. Tonight, we're talking about our landscaping and lighting districts, which are created pursuant to state law and provide funding by levying assessments on property tax bills for ongoing maintenance, operation, and servicing of landscaping and lighting improvements located within the public rights of way and dedicated easements located within each On May 15th, the city council approved resolutions to initiate the proceedings for the annual levy of the assessments for the city's eight landscaping and lighting districts and to take related actions. Tonight is the notice public hearing before council considers approving resolutions to levy the assessments for next fiscal year. The public hearing is the final action required by state law that allows the public to comment on the proposed assessments. The assessments are based on engineers' reports that are prepared for each district, and combined, the city's eight landscaping and lighting districts are expected to generate just over $1.7 million in revenue next fiscal year to fund maintenance and operations of landscaping and lighting improvements within the public rights of way and dedicated easements. Staff recommends that council open the public hearing and then approve resolutions for each of the eight landscaping and lighting districts for fiscal year 2024-2025, providing for each district approval of the engineers' annual levy reports and ordering the levy and collection of assessments. Thank you. I'm available to answer any questions.
Council, have any questions for Dennis, our CFO? All right. Open it up for public comment? Closed public comment? Closed public hearing. If the council doesn't have any additional questions or comments, then I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 10.1, the city council will consider adopting resolutions approving the engineers' annual levy reports for the lighting and landscaping districts for fiscal year 2024-25 and ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the landscaping and lighting districts for fiscal year 2425 for the following districts. The historic districts are resolutions 24-175 and 176 for the infill area, resolutions number 24-177 and 178. For the Johnsons Ranch, resolutions number 24-179 and 180. For the North Central Roseville Specific Plan, resolutions number 24-181 and 182. For the Northwest Roseville Specific Plan, resolution number 24-183 and 184. For the Olympus Point, we have resolutions 24-185 and 186. For the Riverside Avenue, resolutions 24, 187, and 188. And lastly, for the Vernon Street, we have resolutions 24-189 and 190. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashelt.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Thank you for your presentation. Next up is 10.2 zoning and subdivision ordinance updates. I'll open the public hearing, and Mr. Bitter and his team to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Haldashelt, members of the city council. Greg Bitter, Planning Manager with the Development Services Department. I'm going to turn the presentation right over to Eric Singer regarding our annual updates to the zoning and subdivision ordinances.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening, Mayor Haldashelt and councilmembers. Tonight, I'll be discussing the city-initiated zoning and subdivision ordinance legislative update project. So each year, staff reviews the zoning ordinance and other ordinances to identify needed maintenance updates, including updates needed in response to legislation. I'll be reviewing a brief summary of the proposed changes, but both the city council and the planning commission staff reports will go over those changes in greater detail, as well as including the redline sections of both the zoning ordinance as well as the subdivision ordinance. The first change that staff is proposing is to create a separate definition for hydrogen fueling stations and to modify the permitted use table for both hydrogen fuel stations as well as electric vehicle charging centers to remain in compliance with state law. Next, we've created language in conjunction with the city attorney's office to clarify what happens when an appellant fails to appear for an appeal hearing. If they don't appear, the appeal will be denied, and they cannot appeal the denial. There's a new density bonus incentive for qualifying projects that include at least 16% affordable units to very low-income households, again, per new state law. We've also updated the language regarding the appearance of accessory dwelling units to be more objective. This is both to clarify the existing standards as well as make them more enforceable. Additionally, we've included language specifying that no public physical improvements can be required, for example, curb, gutter, sidewalk improvements when building an ADU. This is also to remain in compliance with state legislation. The accessory dwelling unit section as a whole has also been updated to reflect the new government code section under which all ADU law is now located, and that is a very recent change within the last couple of months. We've also added table notes to reflect the fact that when using certain ministerial mapping processes, a property may no longer have an ADU or JADU on it. This will be discussed a little later in the presentation when we talk about the subdivision ordinance updates. The last proposed zoning ordinance amendment is regarding required setbacks for street side yard fences when adjacent to key lots. Now, not to overcomplicate this too much, but a key lot occurs where a rear yard abuts a neighbor's side yard, as pictured above. Currently, side yard fences adjacent to a key lot must be 10 feet back from the sidewalk, and that's that area that's highlighted in red would be the location of the fence. After researching zoning ordinances from several surrounding jurisdictions, staff discovered that the 10-foot minimum setback is more restrictive than all but two other cities in our region. We found that the typical setback for those cities was five feet or less for a similar street side yard fence. So taking into consideration those other city standards, as well as feedback from our own engineering division, we're proposing to reduce that key lot fencing standard down to five feet, but in conjunction with that, also add a clear vision standard for residential driveways, and that is pictured just to the right of the hash-marked area on the diagram there. Those proposed changes would be consistent with the intent of the existing standards to maintain and provide greater visibility for vehicles and pedestrian movements, but also allows residents greater flexibility with potentially moving their fencing locations. Last but not least, staff is proposing to amend the subdivision ordinance, and this is in response to Senate Bill 684. This requires the ministerial approval of up to 10 lots on a property within a multifamily zone district, and that's, in this case, the city's R3-zone district. To quickly summarize, SB 684 permits up to 10 lots and 10 homes, so essentially one home per lot, on a multifamily site, but it only allows this if it wouldn't result in fewer lots than the zoning and the land use designation would allow on that property, essentially preventing a developer from underbuilding a site. Because the majority of the multifamily properties in the city have a land use designation that would permit far more than 10 units, most of them would be ineligible to use this process. Really, only a handful of small infill sites may be eligible, and staff does not expect this process to be utilized very often, if at all. If an applicant does find an applicable site, certain criteria must be met to be eligible for the 10-lot multifamily map, including but not limited to, the original lot size must be five acres or less, you're only allowed one lot, one unit per lot, and it must, again, result in that maximum allowed density on the parcel. Allowed lots can be as small as 600 square feet in size. There's a requirement that they have an average habitable square footage that does not exceed 1,750 square feet. A requirement for one off-street parking space per unit, unless the parcel's within a half-mile of high-quality transit, in which case no parking would be required. Parcels that have certain environmental conditions, such as the presence of wetlands or floodplain designation or within a high-fire hazard area, et cetera, would not be eligible to use this process. And as I mentioned previously, accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. units would not be permitted on lots that are split using this process. In terms of outreach, in March of this year, staff presented the proposed amendments to the Roseville Coalition Neighborhood Association's Arcona Board Meeting. The Arcona Board members did not have any comments or questions of staff other than to ask for staff contact information should they have questions in the future. At the April 25th hearing of this year for the Planning Commission, neither the commissioners nor the public had any questions of staff on the proposed amendments. And in May, City Council hearing notice was published in the Roseville Press Tribune, as well as the Arcona website. And to date, staff has not received any questions or comments on the proposed amendments. In terms of the environmental review, the project would be categorically exempt from CEQA per Section 15061B3, which exempts projects that have no potential to cause a significant effect on the environment. So in conclusion, these are the Planning Commission and staff's recommended actions to council. Just as a point of clarification, the Planning Commission only reviews and comments on the subdivision ordinance because they're not the designated hearing body for the subdivision ordinance, hence the separate recommendation from the Planning Division on the amendments to the subdivision ordinance. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Council, have any questions?
You know, I do. How about, if they, if they can make these changes in, in those areas, what's the option of being able to tell the residents around them? Because I thought they got really lax where you didn't have to tell them, or, you know, it's ministerial, these people can get this. What recourse of people being able to, you know, the neighbors know, or something, that something's...
So if, if somebody was able to, to meet those minimum requirements in the, in the, via the state law and the subdivision ordinance, there, it would be ministerial, so it, there wouldn't be any recourse. What we have done on these ministerial projects, the objective design standard process that you adopted a couple of years ago is one example. We've kind of taken it upon ourselves, we, we create a website and we, we put the information on there. We're not, we don't notice it, but we try and make sure that, that folks talk to the neighbors, there's some, some level of outreach. It's kind of, it's kind of tricky when you, when you make somebody do outreach when there's not a legal obligation to do it, but we still, you know, use our, use our, our powers of persuasion to say that folks should be good neighbors and, and get the word out because it will save time and effort in the long run for everybody. So, but we, if we get one of these 10-lot maps and, you know, we've, we've really racked our brains looking at parcels where these, these apply, because, for instance, our high-density zoning, 13 units an acre, general plan, 13 units an acre is the, is the highest density. So if you have an acre parcel, you can't, you can't qualify for this because you automatically can build 13 units. So you, you can't underbuild. And since it's only a 10-lot map, you'd have to find a, you know, a three-quarter acre, a two-thirds of an acre site that was, had the exact density. It's, it's going to be so tricky. I don't know that we've identified any sites, just kind of looking around. But we would, we would encourage outreach. And then, of course, that puts us in an awkward position because then, when we talk to the neighbors, we'd say, we don't have the legal ability to... If they meet the criteria, we don't have the legal ability to, to deny it or make them change it.
Always amazes me that if somebody wants to make changes and they still want to live there, it, it is kind of nice to talk to your neighbors.
Yeah, it makes the, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Albert, you have a question?
I just had a, a question on the, the one parking space per unit or no parking if you're within a certain distance of transit. We have, generally speaking, our developers are, are nice and build more parking than they have to, which is, but I know they don't have to, especially in some situations. Is this because it's just a statewide flat thing and they're kind of catering to the big cities and we're just stuck? Because it, I mean, it totally affects our neighborhoods if people don't have parking because they don't use transit that often.
Yes, this is a one-size-fits-all piece of legislation.
I hope we're pushing to try to make it reasonable for the small cities. I, I know that's, it's just, it's so crazy.
We submit letters on legislation. We just had a legislative update yesterday and, with the League of Cities, and I think we're working on a few opposition letters that will be floating their way up. Yeah. We, we agree with you 100% on that sentiment.
Our community members just don't, don't see it, so.
Other questions?
Am I right, or did I hear it right, that with these units, they don't have to put sidewalks in?
That was a separate issue. That would have to do with accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. In that case, it is current state law that there can be no requirement for public physical improvements like curb, gutter, sidewalk when you're putting an ADU on your property. That would not necessarily, I think, apply to this particular process.
That's fine, thank you.
Yeah, a ministerial 10-lot subdivision map, if they needed fringe improvements, sidewalks, curb, gutter, we would, they, they would have to do that, for sure.
Good, thanks.
Any other questions before I open for public comment? Open it for public comment?
This is on a different issue, right? Closing?
No, this is public comment on this side.
No, next one.
Okay. Public comment, I'll bring it back to the council for, and I'll close the public hearing. And if there aren't any other questions or comments, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 10.2, the City Council will consider adopting the two findings of fact and introducing for a first reading an ordinance of the Council of the City of Roseville amending zoning ordinance chapters 19.08, 1910, 19.12, 19.22, 19.28, 19.60, 19.80, and 19.95 of Title 19 of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Residential Development Standards, Permitted Commercial Uses, Accessory Structures, Dense Bones, Density Bonus Regulations, and Accessory Dwelling Units, as well as appeals and definitions of terms and phrases. And also introducing for a first reading the ordinance of the Council of the City of Roseville amending subdivision ordinance, Chapter 18.05 of Title 18 of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Ministerial Multifamily Maps. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your excellent presentation.
Thank you.
We will now have that second opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items.
Hi, Karen Elford, resident of Roseville, District 5. I just wanted to make a few comments. I thank Mayor Haldeshelt and Councilmember Mendoza. I know that none of you work, work for the compensation, and I fundamentally believe that the compensation needs to be looked at before the next charter. However, I appreciate the thoughtfulness of the comments because I do think that, and I think it goes to what Vice Mayor Berniscony said, it's just a timing issue. And I think the public needs time to be educated when you're putting something that, you know, that can be confusing. People are hurting from inflation right now, and so I think that having that on top of a tax measure, a transportation tax, that I think is really critical, that, that the council not do anything that might get in the way of the public's ability to really dig in and understand the transportation tax and make an informed vote on that. So I, I appreciate the, the difficulty of being a council that, you know, puts forth something to the public that essentially is, is increasing salaries, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. I also, I heard a lot of comments earlier, or a few comments, about traffic. And I just wanted to say a couple of things on that. I think, you know, I, I did a ride-along with our police recently, got a firsthand look of what challenges, particularly during heavy traffic times, school times and evening, what our law enforcement struggle with in terms of keeping the community safe. And I would just compel our public that driving is a responsibility of the public as much as it is our law enforcement. And when police, and we've seen this in our neighborhood, because out in District 5, we have a lot of growth and a lot of traffic. When the police are there, you know, it, it deters it. So it's really impossible for us to have our law enforcement out in all of these places. I did want to make a correction, too, that I, I believe that a couple of the first comments were Silverado Middle School and Country Club Junction, and while it's probably not critical that, which district it is, because this is a citywide issue, that is actually not District 5. And I think, you know, on the record, maybe if you're looking at some of those hotspots, I, I'm sure law enforcement can understand that, but I just wanted to correct that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have comments on non-agenda items? All right, we'll bring it back to the council. I asked City Manager how he's doing this week.
No further reports, Mayor, thank you.
All right, City Attorney?
I have nothing, thank you.
Great. Let's start with the letter A. I'll ask Councilman Albert to report on anything he'd like to report on.
No, no council assignments necessarily, but we had Downtown Tuesday Nights kicked off in downtown Roseville. It's from 5:30 to 9:00 every Tuesday through June and July. Encourage the public to come out. It's really cool. They do a good job of making sure there's a nice variety of vendors out there, all kinds of food, music's great. The Roseville Cemetery had a really good Memorial Day service. It was very respectful, American Legion Post 169 was there, and I just thought it was nice to see the community come out, a great band played, and I just appreciate that Roseville does that and cares for the memory of people who served us. Congrats to the Solar Neighbor Association, they kicked off a big summer kickoff event, and quite a few community members out there at it, that was neat. We also, I don't remember, I don't think I talked about the ICSC yet, right? We haven't, okay. So four of us went to the ICSC conference, and this is the International Council of Shopping Centers, and it was in Las Vegas. And we had two staff from Economic Development and the CEO for the Roseville Chamber of Commerce and myself, and we basically went out and just talked about, it is an incredibly humongous conference. We're miles and miles and miles of walking every day, it was, it was huge. And we just promoted Roseville, talking to really big commercial organizations, the value of Roseville, making sure they, they knew about us, talking to contractors who worked on these big centers. And I thought it was just really fantastic. Our, our staff helped lead us in, in the process and set up a ton of appointments. And I'm just excited that Roseville is that forward-thinking and actually trying to go out and help draw businesses to our community, because we've got a lot of overlay areas where we need to pull businesses in, a lot of new areas that don't have anything yet. And then the other thing I was going to mention is the Ivy at Blue Oaks. They're a luxury assistant living and memory care facility, it's near the Nugget on Blue Oaks. And they had an event where they were just kind of recapping what they're bringing to our community. I think that's a really nice additional menu item for places, you know, hopefully my, my kids will put me there when I get old, because it's, it's a really cool area, waiting for the actual, for it to actually open, but they did kind of a preliminary.
When are you going to get old?
It might be fairly quick, I don't, I'm not sure. Anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Berniscony?
I don't think I have anything tonight, but thank you.
Councilmember Rakucci?
Oh, just a couple of things. First of all, congratulations to all the high school and college graduates, and also the children that are, had promotions, that's what they call it, for the eighth graders that are going to go into high school. I actually had two, two young grandchildren that were both graduating from different eighth grade, and eighth grades, and they're going to go to high school. So it's real exciting for the family, and I'm sure everybody else who has these people who are graduating now. Also, I was mentioning that it started last Saturday, but in Placer County, they have the Placer County Heritage Trail, and what that is, is the, there's like 25-plus museums in Placer County, and they have programs all over, and it shows you how to get to them. I went to, the ones in Roseville was, were our Carnegie Museum and also the Roseville Telephone Museum on telephones. And it's been a long time since I've been in that telephone museum, I mean, probably 10 years plus, and it was really fantastic to see it. And sometimes you forget some of the really unique things that we have that, and many of them are free, or if you want to donate, in here in Roseville and in Placer County. So I'd say that's going to be, occur all, all the way through summertime, and so it'd be fun to go see it. Next week, I'll have my flood control and water conservation meeting, and so I'll let you know how that goes. And I was also going to mention, there's, we've had a lot of people passing away recently, and one of them is a gentleman by the name of Norm, Norman Freitas, and he's a 93-year-old gentleman who's lived here most of his life. Actually, I, I knew him when I was probably five or seven years old, and he worked for Cadell Chevrolet, and I remember my, and, and my dad saying, if you know, if you need to look for a car or needed any understanding of things, talk to Norm. And he was kind of like the, the wise gentleman in Roseville. But this gentleman has done a lot for Rose, he was a Navy veteran, he's on our park and recs commissions, he was on the cemetery board, personnel board, I wrote all these down, I mean, there's more than you can even write. Grants Commission, Roseville Chamber of Commerce, Roseville Hospital Board. He was on Placer County Board of Education for 39 years, park and rec. Really nice people. One of those people that just made Roseville what it is. And just, I would say is a life well-lived, his family, his wife, his wife of 73 years, I mean, I can't even imagine that, but just a really nice person. And I just remember him as a little kid and, and as I became an adult, and he's made his mark on a lot of things in Roseville that made Roseville what we are today. And that's, that's my story tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any council assignment updates, just a few comments. First of all, I joined Mayor Haldeshelt in the first annual Stone Ridge Cornhole Tournament at Harry Crab Park a few weeks ago. I could say the mayor and I dominated in this tournament, but that'd be a complete lie.
Well, we beat the winning team.
We beat the, the team that ended up being first, so we made it to Division 2. We're Division 2 council members in Cornhole.
We're practicing for 2027.
Division 2 team, we're practicing 2027, right behind, yeah, yeah, we're, we're ready. Yeah, that was, that was a lot of fun. Thank you to the Stone Ridge Neighborhood Association for the invite and the opportunity to participate. There was eight different teams, and everyone was very friendly until it got down to the final three, and we watched that from the sidelines, so, from a safe distance, so that was a lot of fun. A few nights ago, the Placer, Roseville, Placer SPCA had their Wolfendine on Vernon Town Square. I was able to attend that, very well attended, good amount of money raised, it was nice to see the public and their favorite pooches out there enjoying an evening on the square. Downtown Tuesday Night was already mentioned. I just want to mention also that the next concert in the park at Royer Park is this coming Sunday, starting at 5:00 PM. So if you are in the neighborhood, they'll have food trucks and vendors out there, as well as a great live band starting at 6:00 PM, and will play into the early evening hours. So if you're around and in town, I highly recommend you join your neighbors out there for a wonderful concert. And that's it, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. So I serve the city on the SECAG, and our Board of Directors meeting is tomorrow. A lot of transportation, then we have a, a working lunch where we have a focus on understanding transportation. Before we meet again, as I mentioned earlier, I serve on the Placer Transportation Planning Agency. Transportation measure is vitally important for our community, and on June 18th, I will be at Campelli's eating more pizza, because I like pizza. I should just eat pizza throughout the city, but with our Executive Director, Matt Klick, talking about the transportation measure for there. As Vice Mayor Berniscony and former Mayor Pauline Rakucci have know from personal experience, you get to do a lot of really, really gratifying things as, when you're the mayor. And in some cases, you know, you almost want to pay the community for the privilege of doing that. But earlier this week, the City Manager and I had an opportunity to welcome the 18 or 19 high school...
Juniors.
Weren't they, they were juniors, right? Who will be interns for the city for the month of June. And boy, talking to some of them out there, I, I see future members of boards and commissions and, and other things. One of the other great things I got to do was, we heard the mention of WT Ike earlier, I got to go to their first sustainability conference. I forget the date because they all start to run together, but it was really enriching to see how thoughtful these folks were on, on that. And then that, that same day, I had an opportunity to see... And then that, that same day, I had an opportunity to see, listen to this carefully, our former assistant city manager, Dion Louthen, and our housing manager, and I sat down with a Wood Creek High School student who wanted to talk about what the city's been doing with respect to homelessness, so that was terrific pizza. You know, everybody come on out on Saturday, you can come anytime you want to St. John's, but especially line up early about 12:15, because I will be in the dunk tank at 12:30, and I know there's a lot of, in the community who want to take a, you know, I understand there's a former major league or a minor league prospect that's going to be trying to dunk me, and I'm looking, I wish it was today. Housing, okay. You know, again, I'll be talking to the Realtors next week, and before we meet again, it will be Father's Day, so happy Father's Day to everyone, and, you know, whether you're a father, or whether you, you know, whether you have a father, you are a father, or you're married to a father, so happy Father's Day, and with that, we'll...
Covering all your bases, though, Mayor.
I'm trying, I, you know, I don't know what the water temperature is in the dunk tank, but I think I need to find out. But anyway, there's nothing else to come before us, we'll be adjourned until the meeting of June 19th. Thank you.